Those who are in, it must be time to get started. So I want to call the order. The February 10th, Meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. I want to welcome everybody who's here in the council chamber. I want to welcome those who might be watching us on Channel 10, those who might be listening to us on those computers, or watching us on their, the computers. We want you to partake in city government, because this is your city government, so partake in any way that works for you. So again, I welcome each and every one of you. We'll get started now, and I'm going to ask for the roll call by the city clerk.
Cummings?
Here.
Peck?
Here.
Herman?
Here.
Allison Osby?
Here.
Pansky?
Here.
Fitzgerald?
Here.
Tower?
Here.
Present seven.
I'm going to ask everybody to rise for the invocation, pledge of allegiance. The invocation will be led by councilmember Cummings, and the pledge of allegiance will be led by our students.
We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city, and we always seek the wisdom to do things that reflect our concern for the people whom we represent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have our students turn around and look at people out there, so they can see you. We do appreciate when the students come and help us out. We also like to find out a little bit about the students. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to pass the microphone down, and as I pass the microphone down, I'd ask you to speak directly into the microphone, so everybody can hear real, real well. And why don't you indicate what your name is, where you go to school, what grade you're in, your favorite subject at school, and why it's your favorite subject.
My name is Gabe Storms. I go to Grace Lutheran School. I'm in seventh grade, and my favorite subject is science, because of the chemical reactions.
My name is Teresa Perry. I also go to Grace Lutheran. I'm in seventh grade. My favorite subject is English, because the teacher's awesome.
My name is Grace Erns, and I go to Martin Luther, and I'm in fifth grade. My favorite subject is math, because, oh, it's fun to me.
My name is Olivia Norowski, and I go to Martin Luther School also. I'm in sixth grade, and my favorite art, my, my favorite class is art, because I like to make graphs.
Good. Again, we do appreciate you coming down, spending time with us, and leading us in the pledge, and so I have a certificate for each one of you, so I'm going to pass these out. If we can, I'd like to have a hand for our students, helping us out there. Now you all can go home and study your favorite subjects. Get ahead on it. Okay, the next item on the agenda is something a little unusual, that we don't really have very often. It's a formal hearing regarding the possible revocation of a license, of a liquor license. And so, we will have a process that we'll go through over the course of the evening here. So I read this. "The purpose of the meeting is to conduct a hearing per Section 125.12 of the Wisconsin statutes on the decision to revoke the license of Gail Savka for the premises located at 129 West Seventeenth Avenue, Oshkosh, Wisconsin." Appearing for the complainant, Mr. Mark Roloff, are you here? The respondent's licensee, or any represent, any representative of licensee. Someone here to represent? So you're here, okay. That's why I want to make sure. Okay, here's what the procedure's going to be. There's going to be a statement by the city clerk regarding filing of the complaint, issuance and proof of service of the summons. So we'll have that to start it off. Then we'll have testimony of the complainant, which would be Mr. Roloff, testimony of the licensee, or the licensee's representative, case may be. There will be a final statement by the complainant, final statement by the licensee or representative. Then the hearing itself will be closed, at which time the council will then go into deliberation, and that'll be a public deliberation regarding the possible revoking of the license, one way or another. We're going to have the testimony by the complainant, and then the testimony by the licensee, the licensee's representative. What's going to happen is they're going to come up, they're going to be sworn in, I think each person has to be sworn in, so you come up to the clerk to get sworn in, then, then make your statement. Following the statement, the other party can ask questions at that particular point in time, and after the other party asks questions, council members may ask questions of either party after the statement. So I'll kind of lead people through it, kind of step by step. And so we'll, we'll get started with the process. So first of all, I'm going to ask for the statement by the city clerk regarding the filing of the complaint, issuance and proof of service of summons.
A complaint was filed with the office of the city clerk by Mark Roloff, a resident of the city of Oshkosh, on February 2nd, 2015, against Gail Savka, licensee for premises located at 129 West Seventeenth Avenue, Oshkosh, Wisconsin, commonly known as Timbuktu's. A summons was issued to Ms. Savka notifying her that a complaint had been filed, and that a hearing would be held on Tuesday, February 10th, 2015, at 6:00 PM. The original summons and complaint were given to the Oshkosh Police Department for service on Ms. Savka. A certificate of service was returned to the office of the city clerk regarding the summons and complaint were served on Reed Savka, an adult member family of Gail Savka, at 3:58 PM on February 2nd, 2015.
Okay, I'm going to ask for the testimony of the complainant. That'll be Mr. Roloff. Mr. Roloff, I'd ask that you go in and get sworn in, and then go to the microphone.
Do you swear that the testimony that you shall give regarding this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
It's an unusual spot for me to be in, but as the mayor said, this is a relatively infrequent occurrence. I'm Mark Roloff, I'm the city manager for the city of Oshkosh, and I'm also a resident of the city of Oshkosh, which, which is required to be filing a complaint. 465 Winding Brook is my residential address. I was notified by the city's clerk's office that the records indicated that the license issued to Ms. Gail Savka has not been used since January 13th, 2014, due to a fire that happened on January 12th, 2014, on her premises located at 129 West Seventeenth Avenue. Based on the information received from the clerk's office, and pursuant to the council's policy on, for inactive alcohol beverage licenses adopted on June 24th, 2014, I filed a complaint against Ms. Savka for non-use of alcohol beverage license for a one-year period under Section 4-5 of the city's municipal code. Council's direction is, I'll direct council's attention to Exhibit 4, which is the portion of Chapter 125 of Wisconsin statutes related to council's role in this, and related to city's role in this. I would also direct your attention to Exhibit 5. That's Section 4.5 of the city of Oshkosh municipal code, which discusses that as well. And then finally, I direct your attention to Exhibit 6, which is the city council policy for inactive alcohol beverage licenses, which you adopted on June 24th, 2014. And my role here is to be the official complainant, and bring this to council's attention for, for action. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember, how many questions? This time, any questions on the Savka film? You're going to get a chance to make statements on afterwards. Okay, I see no questions, so I'll ask that you be seated. Ask now for the testimony of licensee of the representative.
We have another.
Okay. Somebody else regarding the complaint.
Do you swear that the testimony that you shall give regarding this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Hello. I am Angela Jauchel, deputy city clerk for the city of Oshkosh. As deputy city clerk, my duties include day-to-day administration of the city's alcohol beverage licensing program, including the duty to keep the official records for the city of Oshkosh pertaining to liquor licenses. The official records kept with the city clerk show that Ms. Gail Savka was granted and issued through the city clerk's office a license for premises located at 129 West Seventeenth Avenue for July 1st, 2013, through June 30th, 2014. I became aware that a fire had occurred on the property on or about January 12th, 2014, and later confirmed with Ms. Savka that due to the fire on the property, the business was closed as of January 13th, 2014. At license renewal time for 2014, the council requested Ms. Savka to appear before them with regard to the status of her property. Ms. Savka submitted a letter regarding the status of her business at that time, Exhibit 7. Ms. Savka was granted a license for the premise located at 129 West Seventeenth Avenue for July 1st, 2014, through June 30th, 2015, Exhibit 8. A letter was sent to Ms. Savka on June 26th, 2014, from the city clerk informing her that a license had been granted on June 10th, 2014, by the common council, and informing her that the clerk's office records indicated the premises had been closed in January 2014. The letter informed Savka that in December, she would receive a letter informing her that she may be brought before the council for revocation if the premises had not been reopened by that date, Exhibit 9. In order for a licensee license to be issued by the city clerk's office, it must be granted by the common council, and the premises must pass certain inspections, including building, health, and fire inspections. The premises at 129 West Seventeenth Avenue has not passed building, health, and fire inspections, and so the license for the 2014-2015 year has not been issued by the city clerk's office. Pursuant to the council policy for inactive alcohol beverage licenses adopted on June 24th, 2014, the city clerk sent a letter to Ms. Savka on December 12th, 2014, informing Ms. Savka that the council would be made aware that her license had not been used for one year by the January 13th, 2015 date, Exhibit 10. The city clerk's office received a letter from Ms. Savka on December 16th, 2014, regarding the status of her plans, Exhibit 11. As of today's date, the 2014-2015 alcohol beverage license for the premise located at 129 West Seventeenth Avenue has not been issued, and the business has not been open for business since January 13th, 2014.
Any questions at this point?
Thank you.
We have.
The only other thing is, we would ask, we submitted to the council prior to the hearing, and Ms. Savka was also given a copy of all of the exhibits pre-numbered for the hearing, and we'd ask the council if they'd accept all those exhibits.
Any informal motion to accept the documents?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. I'll ask clerk, take the roll call, vote.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Okay, then I'm going to ask licensee of the representative, Savka, or representative, And I'd ask you to face the clerk, if he's sworn in.
Do you swear that the testimony that you shall give regarding this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay. And then, for the record, if you would just state your name and address.
Gail Savka. My address is 528 Grove Street, 511.
Thank you.
Ask you to go to the microphone for your comments, please.
I had brought along my contractor. I don't know if you would like to have him come up right away, or if you'd have some questions for him.
Why doesn't he come up and sit here in front? And then he may want to make some statements, and they have some questions of him. Should we swear him in at this point? Who's swearing you in at this point? If you face the clerk.
Do you swear that the testimony that you shall give regarding this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
I've had a long and very difficult time dealing with an insurance settlement. My insurance company has settled. On January 23rd, my state plan was sent to both the state and the city of Oshkosh for approval, or whatever their process is. I do have the copy of what they sent. I do not have the copy of the actual architectural plans, because they're pretty significant. Matt Vianola is my contractor. I've been working with him, and he probably has any more information that you might have. Matt would probably be more likely to be able to tell you than I would.
Where do you want to go from this? If you want to, why don't you tell us what your plan is? Why don't you describe the overall plans, and we're going to ask questions. Obviously, you have a contractor here.
The plan is to rebuild the building.
The plan is, is it'll get done in a certain period of time, and you'll be open at such and such a date, and you will be actively serving, if you have a license, actively serving alcohol.
Yes.
Could you tell us kind of what your plan is for that opening, that he can confirm that?
Okay. It would be the same front of the building, with an addition on the back, a restaurant, a kitchen, and apartment buildings up above on the second floor. There would be a two-story second. So it's essentially the same blueprint, same footprint of the building that was there before, but it, changes were, had to be made due to the structure that was there before. So those changes have been sent to, and Chet Wiesenberg is my architect. So it essentially is the same function that I had before, minus a banquet hall.
So he's not the architect also?
He's hired from me.
Okay, okay. What's the date you're planning on opening this?
Well, that would depend on, Matt.
Okay, maybe, why don't you go up and be up there, and tell us what you know about this, what's going to happen, and when it's going to happen?
Right now, we're actually...
Timing's critical. Also, you might indicate to us when you, when you came into this, when you first signed a contract with.
I signed a contract probably three, four months ago, I guess.
October, I think? September, October?
After we figured out what the insurance company was going to do, and all that, you know. But I guess what we're, where we're at right now with the, the building side of it is, we're going, we're applying for a continued, I mean, a conditional use permit, because of some of the changes with the apartments, and that kind of thing. We do have actually a set of plans, or I think you guys can have these. I only have one set, but for, but what the building's going to look like, it's pretty much like it was before, trying to use the old front half of the building, and then add the bar in the back, and the restaurant, and the apartments upstairs. So we do have a full set of plans here, there are many versions, but a full set of plans. So we are moving forward. I believe, the way it sounds, the insurance is taken care of, right?
Yeah.
So I guess I would like to start moving forward in March, possibly, depending on weather. Then we'd be done by, whether you're pending out, so by end of December, beginning of fall. Sometime in August, hopefully.
So you're looking at the potential for opening, and?
Yeah, it's about six, eight months to do the whole project. As far as the bar business is concerned, we could probably get that up and running before the apartments, but prefer to do it all at the same time.
Okay, councilmembers, questions?
Then if you need a copy of the, we have the building application here, and the application itself. You can have it, it's pretty much on your record anyway. Ms. Savka, or Mr. Vianola, I'm curious about the approximate size and square feet of the facility, and do you know capacity-wise? How many, is it going to? I, I was familiar with what it was prior to the fire. Is it going to be similar in terms of?
We're in the existing footprint of the old building. The whole development's been existing footprint.
Okay, so, and the, and the area where you'll be serving at least beverages is going to be that same footprint as well?
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's actually included in a new patio, which is actually in the existing footprint. So the size of the building's going to shrink a little bit, but creating a patio inside the footprint.
Okay.
I believe it's like, if you look in the plans, I believe it's like forty-five-hundred square feet on the first floor. Thirty-five-hundred, maybe.
And, and when, when was it that you filed paperwork with the inspection department?
23rd of January.
23rd of January.
You're working, I mean, we had a lot of, I was a researcher to do what, what you can and can't do on the property, with zoning, and all the other codes.
I have a question.
Sure.
This is a residential neighborhood, correct?
Uh, mixed.
And what is it zoned for?
It's zoned for commercial.
It is zoned for?
It's zoned properly. Everything's there to have. The only thing we're getting, it's a mixed use, possibly, if we do the conditional use.
Okay.
The front is the actual building, the C3, isn't it?
Right. I mean, we're zoned probably for it. You have Whiskies is right next door, there's a zone property, you have it on all four corners of that intersection, it's zoned for what we're doing. We're just kind of mimicking that.
For the council's benefit, we also have Darren Barage available. We can have him sworn in, and we can ask him questions regarding the zoning, the plans as well. He's also available to testify.
Okay. Darren, why don't you come on up anyway? Get sworn in, and then if we, we need you, we won't have to wait for you later. Everybody out there.
Just while he's coming up, one question is, on the plan, it says existing, and new two-story addition. Is that just that what is existing is what's there now, and then?
Yeah, basically, 1952, they had their front half to the old part of the back of the building where it was, the BFW, at the time. And then, the front half of the building survived the fire, the back half was a total loss. So we're actually going to rebuild in the existing footprint of the old back half, including the front half. Then there also is existing second story on that building, that we're going to, we're going to modify it to accommodate for apartments. So there's going to be three two-bedroom apartments, and then one single-bedroom apartment.
Were there apartments there before? I know it's a two-story building, was the second?
There was no apartments, no living quarters upstairs before, no. That's the conditional use side of it.
And the insurance claim has been settled?
Yes.
And again, the timing is March, beginning?
Well, we get really nice February, outside of February, but I mean, realistically, probably in the March.
Yeah, I was going to, would it be in order to ask Mr. Burge to come to the forefront at this time?
If you'd like him to come back.
Yeah, there's obviously a timeline.
Yes, please do.
The zoning and all, I can sell to it, that can happen.
You're going to need to get sworn in.
Do you swear that the testimony that you're going to provide for this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Obviously, you know, I'm not asking you to say how the vote would be, but, and a conditional use permit is based on just that, it has to be reviewed and everything like that. Does having apartments in this fit into zoning, and, and everything within that area, or is this something outside of?
Well, I can't really go into the, because that would be a matter that has to go before the planning commission of the common council yet, but from a land use basis, a, a mixed use, a mixed use development like this would not be out of character with the, with the uses, with the other uses in the area. I think Whiskies has some, some apartments above it, so from that standpoint, we don't have a, I don't, just initially, without having to go through the CUP process, I don't have any concerns with the land use.
And what do you foresee the timing to be for the conditional use permit process?
I don't believe they've, I don't believe they've made an application yet for the CUP. Well, I don't know if that's come through our office yet. I checked today. I don't, I don't know if the application is coming. I know that's been discussed with both Chet, and some of the, and the applicant. I just haven't, I have not seen it yet, but I know that they know it's in process. We, we informed Chet of that within the last week or so. The project also itself has been through site plan review process, so all the reviewing properties, the site plan review, they've, it's in review. It's not approved yet, they still have to work through some things, but it's working its way through the system right now.
Thank you.
So I've got another question for you. When was the insurance settlement settled? You said it took a while to settle it. When was it finally settled? How long ago?
December, late December.
Okay, so almost a year.
Yeah.
Other questions? Anything the complainants want to ask?
I have a question. Ms. Savka, knowing that the city sent you numerous letters back in 14, 15, following this, did you have any correspondence with the clerk's office to kind of let them know the status and where things are going? Or did you have to wait until the city sent you notices?
No, actually, I was down there a couple of different times and talked to her.
And you kept the city apprised that, where the status was, and so that, we maybe wouldn't have had to do this hearing if everybody knew that you had all this ahead of time?
She told me, she told me I would get, I would actually have been down there several times, and sort of tried to keep her in the loop. She told me that is, just as a matter of record, that I would get a letter thirty days before January 12th, and to expect it, and I did. She wanted a letter, which I sent her, regarding sort of the status. I don't know if any of you have ever been through an insurance company, thing like this, but it can be very lengthy and very unpleasant.
Well, I'm sure it has. I, I guess the bottom line is, is, you know, a lot of staff time was involved in a lot of, of this maybe could have been avoided if you would have just kept city staff and council up to date, so that council would have been kept up to date, so that we knew that the process, I mean, you had been notified, and I know you came back in front of us about a year ago, or whatever, and we gave you a, you know, granted another year, knowing that you were working on getting the insurance claim. And I guess, just for future, I guess, you know, we, the city needs to be informed of what's going on with properties that have city licenses and city permits, so that...
I didn't have the architectural plans until January 23rd, so there was really, very little point in anything I could submit, until I actually had something submitted to the, to the state and the city.
Yeah, with the insurance, and how this whole, all kind of had the same time, pretty much, it's at the end of this year.
Okay.
Not really her fault, I guess.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Why don't you all stand up there, then? I'm going to ask the complaint to come up, make a final statement, complainants. You all stay up here, if you would, I'd appreciate it, so.
Oh, just in closing, you know, Chapter 125 provides that the city may revoke a license if the person violated the city ordinance. Section 4-5 of the code requires licensees to conduct a license-related business, and if they haven't done it for more than a year, it's brought back to council, that they were in violation of Section 4.5, which precipitated this discussion this evening. That's, that's it in a nutshell, so that's all we have on behalf of complaining party.
Angela?
I have nothing else.
Okay, so, nothing else to say at this time? Okay, final statement, bye.
We'll start as soon as we can.
Start as soon as we can.
That's where we're at.
Okay, no other questions by anybody at this point in time? I assume we can close the hearing?
Yes, unless the council has any more questions. If not so, then the hearing can be closed.
Yeah, I just got to see that plan real quick, before I give it to you.
I'm sorry, you want this?
Yeah, I just got, I got to thumb through it real quick, and then I'll give it back to you. Thanks.
Yeah, I'm going to, the public hearing closed at this point in time, we'll go to council member deliberation. A couple things on the deliberation. In essence, we will make, there'll be a motion, which I'll ask for, to revoke the license, because that's what the hearing is about. A yes vote would revoke the license, a no vote would not revoke the license, at, at this point in time. So the complaint then is effectively dismissed. The way this would work, if, if one was thinking down the line, we want to make sure that things are moving along. The reality is, we wouldn't need a motion to ensure that, in June, the license will come up for renewal. At that time, we could ask them to come before us in June, and ask what the status is, you know. Are we, are we halfway through the construction season? Obviously, we're not, haven't moved on the construction, that'll be an issue. So it'll automatically come up for renewal in June, regardless of what we do. So we'll get another look at this in June, if we don't revoke the license today. Is that clear, so, so people understand that? So, in case people were thinking, want to see how progress is, and check on progress, we will get a June status report, and then we will be able to make a decision whether to go forward and issue a license for the next year or not. So, are we all clear on that? Okay, then I would ask for a motion to approve the resolution revoking the license.
It's a mo, second.
It's been moved... It's been moved and seconded, discussion.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Mayor, I certainly just say... When we've done these procedures in the past, I've seen evidence tonight that the tavern owner is moving forward with their plans and is complying with what they promised last year when they spoke with us. And I don't... Personally, I don't see any reason to take this license away from him at this point.
I would agree as well. And we have another follow-up in June to assure that the construction does move forward.
Other comments or any other questions?
If you're thinking about having the license holder come back in June, we would... Staff would like it if you would let us know, because a non-renewal is a special process where we have to give notice and whatnot, as opposed to just putting it on the agenda to be renewed. So...
I greatly suspect, at least I would, and my guess is my compadres here would rather... Would ask that... We ask you to come back in June and give us a status report at that time, at the time of non-renewal, so it's not done automatically. Can we have that as a separate consideration at that particular point in time? Anybody disagree with that?
No. And just if we could get a... And if construction starts sooner, if we could get a status update, that would be wonderful as well. We'll probably all be driving by as well.
Okay. Go ahead and sit down. Anything else by council members?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
I will ask the clerk take the vote. Before I ask... Before the clerk takes the vote, I want to remind people that a yes vote would revoke the license. So, if you don't want to revoke the license, the vote is no. Okay? Ask the clerk to take the roll call vote on the motion to revoke the license.
Cummings?
No.
Peck?
No.
Herman?
No.
Allison Osby?
No.
Pansky?
No.
Fitzgerald?
No.
Tower?
No.
Lost zero seven.
Okay, I guess that brings the hearing and the action at this point to a close. And we will expect to see the folks back in June at the time of the license renewal. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is a public hearing. This will be the second reading. I'm going to read this three times. Resolution. And if... While I'm reading it, if somebody would like to comment on it, please come up to the microphone while I'm reading it. The resolution is fifteen dash forty-seven. Approval of final resolution for special assessments. Contracts number fifteen dash thirteen and fifteen dash fourteen. Snell Road Sanitary Sewer, grade and gravel and asphalt pavement. Second reading, resolution fifteen dash forty-seven. Approval of final resolution for special assessments. Contracts number fifteen dash thirteen and fifteen dash fourteen. Snell Road Sanitary Sewer, grade and gravel and asphalt pavement. Third and final reading, resolution fifteen dash forty-seven. Approval of final resolution for special assessments. Contracts number fifteen dash thirteen and fifteen dash fourteen. Snell Road Sanitary Sewer, grade and gravel and asphalt pavement. If someone at the microphone can speak to this, please give us your name and your address.
My name is Tom Zilgus and I live at thirty-eight fifteen Shorebird Court in Oshkosh. I'm affiliated with Zilgus Materials on Snell Road. Approximately twenty years ago, Jackson Kenny, which was the city planner at that time, asked me to come into the city so they could get sewer and water beyond our property and across the road to a certain company. So, I did that, okay? Because without me, they couldn't have run it that far. So, I did it, being a good guy. So, now it seems like I'm coming back and I'm getting lots of bills from the city. They want to redo that road. They're going to put a big pipe in to service the prison or the north side of Oshkosh. And they're going to take most of the road up. And so, they got... So, I got to pay for redoing that road. They want to assess me sixty-five thousand dollars. So, now with the storm water runoff, I got... Went up two-hundred percent this year and I'll be paying approximately fourteen thousand dollars for storm water runoff on my property. I have ditches there and it just seems unfair that I have to pay that. And then also, my taxes are up close to thirty thousand dollars. So, with my road assessment, they want to assess me sixty-five thousand. That's almost a hundred thousand dollars I have to come up with this year to satisfy what the city wants from me. I'm a small company. I don't know how I'm going to figure out how to get a hundred thousand dollars out of my customers. My customers are very loyal. For sixty years, I sold quality products. I'm not going to sell anything less than quality. And so, when it gets too expensive, then I'll have to do something different. For being in the city, the people across the street that didn't assess in the city don't have to pay anything. I don't have to pay anything for the road, anything for storm water runoff, whatever. So, why I went into the city, I'll never know. We were going to build a new truck, maintain the shop. We went down the road into the town where it's much cheaper. We are not going to... I can't do this much longer. So, before I do something different with quality products I won't sell, I'll move someplace else. I don't know how you expect me to keep paying this kind of money.
Okay. Thank you.
Anita Pemberton, we are with Wisconsin MHP six. And I have to agree with Mr. Zilgus. We pay an awful lot for storm water runoff every month or every quarter. And we don't have... Our stuff drains into his pot. And we don't have storm sewers, anything like that. That's not even on this plan. So, I have a big problem with paying some of this. Our company does. And I really think that we need to address putting some storm sewers in.
Thank you. Others like to comment at this point in time? Sure, we'll get into some discussion of those issues. Okay, I'm going to bring it back to council and ask for a motion on second on resolution fifteen dash forty-seven.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, resolution fifteen forty-seven. Comments, questions? Ask questions to follow.
Yeah.
Should I have Mr. Grody reply to it? Mr. Grody respond to the concerns raised there, which seems to be over here?
Certainly, I'll address some of those. To the first one for the storm sewer. As this project has developed, this is for the Snell West Lift Station. It's going to replace an existing lift station. The de-watering required for this project is going to be very substantial. In review of that, we are actually looking to propose to put in storm sewer starting at Sterns and Slu... Basically, Sterns and where the creek crosses to go underneath Sterns, run that south and east, then on Snell Road. So, we will be looking to put in a storm sewer to help alleviate some of the ditch issues that are out there that have created standing water, cattail issues, and essentially an unmaintainable ditch. But from the storm sewer standpoint, we are looking to move that forward and get that in the project. This project has... As the final estimates have come in, we are going to be over what is currently budgeted in the capital improvement program. As a result of that, we are coming through with a public hearing yet at this point in time. We will be looking to get additional funds put in the capital improvement program for two thousand sixteen and then bidding this project after the capital improvement program is approved, assuming the funding is in there in late fifteen and starting the construction in sixteen. However, holding these two thousand fifteen projects, we should be getting two thousand fifteen bid rates for that work.
And what's the bottom line in response to Mr. Zilgus there in terms of his situation?
The assessments that Mr. Zilgus's properties are receiving is for the grading and gravelling, to put a adequate stone base down under Snell Road to serve the truck traffic and traffic that is out there. And then a asphalt pavement, again, that is designed to handle truck traffic because this is a commercial area. The assessments are calculated based on prior year's construction costs for that grading and gravelling and asphalt. We actually held them the same as the prior year because our projects this past year were two... Were very small and the prices were extremely escalated. So, we held the two thousand thirteen... Pardon me, the two thousand thirteen rates through fourteen and fifteen now. The calculation is done based on those costs. The non-residential properties or commercial properties are assessed for thirty-seven and a half percent of the cost of the road. The assessment policy says the budding properties pay seventy-five percent. That will be split between the two properties and then the city picking up the remaining twenty-five percent. As for the properties that are in the town, the city cannot assess those properties. Those will simply become a part of the project cost to do that work. The construction of the lift station is going to severely challenge that road that is in very poor condition out there today. Any of the road that is in good condition, where we're simply are able to patch the road because it has already been repaired, those property owners are not being assessed. They've already had those projects taken care of. Some of them have been done through DOT or R projects.
Other questions, sir?
Mr. Grody, if the project is held off till two thousand sixteen, will these assessments still occur in two thousand fifteen? Or will they be deferred till next year then?
The assessments will not be finally calculated till after the project is done. If the project occurs in two thousand sixteen, the property owners likely will not see the bill until two thousand seventeen.
Are his estimates of what his cost might be true?
They are based on...
Of a hundred thousand?
They are based on the prior year's project costs.
And that?
Unless these... Unless the costs would come in substantially lower, that we would look to revise that. And I don't foresee that based on what we're seeing for projected prices.
It's an accurate portrayal of what his cost might be?
Yeah, yes, it's not estimated high in this case.
Okay, it's not estimated high in that for the length that he has and that's what it appears that it would be. So, his statements... His statement was essentially true with respect to the potential cost and burden?
He has about a thousand feet of frontage.
Mayor, if you look on the sheet, the assessment total is fifty-five thousand. The other... As part of the presentation, I think there were multiple costs from other issues that were brought into account. But for Zilgus Real Estate, for the frontage of eight hundred... Almost eight hundred and twenty feet, we show a total assessment of fifty-five thousand four hundred fourteen.
And then there's another lot. There's another lot that's owned by Zilgus, another ten. That's where Tom comes up with the sixty-five thousand.
Okay. I thought the mayor said a hundred, but...
I heard a hundred thousand figured out.
I think Tom was referring to when you add his taxes and his special assessment, that's probably what he was referring to. Tom and I've had discussions before, so I know where Tom was going.
The assessment clarification, the assessment total is about sixty-five thousand dollars.
If you add those two, that's correct. It's not a hundred.
It's sixty-seven, sixty... Sixty-seven dollars and sixty cents per front foot. You're out there, large area, commercial area, and you get close to a thousand feet when you talk about both the property. So, sixty-seven times a thousand is... It's just shy of... It's around sixty-five thousand. So, the number's not in dispute.
Okay, that's... That was all I wanted. I just wanted to get clear that that was... His issue is real. Other questions or comments at this point in time?
Mr. Grody, what's the total cost? Do we know what the total... Projected total cost of the project? Because in the CIP, the... We approved over a million seven for the project. Page twenty-five, if you got your CIP.
I don't have my CIP. I have to go... There... We budgeted another one point seven this year. There was one point two budgeted in a prior year for that. Current project estimates for the two are we're at about estimated three million dollars for the lift station and another three and a half million for the interceptor sewer pipe.
Now, this area traditionally floods on a regular basis when we have heavy rain or because of the way the creek flows along that area and everything that it adds. You were telling me earlier about the groundwater and some other issues?
This area has extremely high groundwater. So, any leaks in the sanitary sewer system would certainly pose a problem. The system out here is not that old. We don't have indications of leaks. The primary driving factor behind this project is actually their sanitary sewer... Currently, the sanitary sewer system from the lift station that is in front of the prison drains east toward Jackson Street, then south on Jackson Street. There's a portion of that sanitary sewer that is over capacity on a routine basis. It is actually pushing sewage back up a line into a different area. We have had to put a hiatus on any development in that area where a developer has had some interest because there is simply not capacity in that sewer system. We're redirecting that sewage flow to the west, needing to upsize the lift station, bring it down through a larger sanitary sewer interceptor to get it to the treatment plant without going through the smaller system that exists down Jackson Street and not needing to replace the sanitary sewers from down Jackson Street for several thousands of feet.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Just ask one more, so that's kind of an alternative that has to be pursued? There's not really an alternative to that? The burden is pretty high, I can recognize that. The other taxes and things are things that are out there and I can't... We can't speak to that and we can't deal with that.
The calculations for the asphalt pavement are done in accordance with the policy on special assessments that the city has adopted with the council. They're calculated on that. Again, it's not... With the limited number of properties, their assessments are not increased to cover for properties that are not in the city. Those will become a city cost. It is what any property... Commercial property would pay in the city if we were doing the same project. It's just with the size of lot that is out here in the frontage, the costs compound and are quite large.
And all aspects of the project need to be done to alleviate the issues that are underneath them.
Correct.
For example, just to do the math, if you had a fifty-foot commercial lot with the same rate, it'd be slightly thirty... It'd just be under thirty-four hundred dollars. So, it's as Mr. Grody said, it's a scale of the project. It's just a much larger piece of property you're talking about out there. And that's what happens with the larger lots. It's very common. The assessments for the larger lots are just simply a function of size.
One more question?
Sure, go right ahead.
Mr. Grody, you mentioned that we're charging the property owners, I think it's five or six of them that I see here, the rate of twenty fourteen or fifteen?
This is the rate that was calculated for the two thousand fifteen construction season. It is typically calculated based on the two thousand fourteen actual costs. However, our costs for last year, because of a very limited project, were very excessive. They would have gone up, I believe, in the area to twenty-five, twenty-eight percent. We held the two thousand thirteen rate as a result because two thousand fourteen was just not a representative cost of what we expected projects to come in at.
Okay. So, where I'm going at is by the time we actually do the project, the cost of the asphalt and everything probably will be much higher? And the city will assume that cost then?
That is correct.
So, they're actually... Even though it's awful high, they're actually getting a deal because we're assessing them at current rate and we don't know what the rate... Now, the rate could be down, I suppose, if oil would continue to go down and everything else, maybe. We don't know, but if it did, that would be reflected too, which has always... Has happened in the past, so... But we're planning on twenty-seventeen rates for this project. Sixteen rates, right?
We're using the twenty...
Right, we're using the twenty-fourteen rate, but doing the project in...
Sixteen.
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 Correct.
It's not uncommon for communities to develop a flat rate assessment so that as we enter the year, we can tell people what they're going to pay. We can't... We can't charge more than what it costs us to do.
Correct.
But we fully expect this to be at least this much. And it could be greater, but that's just... That's something that we do over the course of every special assessment season.
I don't know if you can... I know there's businesses out there, so I take it this area and this... And these are almost all businesses. Is this zone a kind of multi-use, commercial? Do we know what it is? You're shaking your head back there, Darren. Do we know what it is?
If you look on the assessment sheet, actually, the... Of the properties that are listed, there are four that are listed as non-residential and two that are listed as R-three, R-five out of the assessable properties. Other than there's the property that's direct build to the city and then the two town properties.
Okay, so, it's a multi-use or a commercial zoning?
If you look on a map, there's a... There's one map that shows that there are some M-one zoning, there's some R-three zoning, there's some C-two zoning. So, it's commercial, industrial, and residential.
Okay, that's where I was going. What's all out there?
It's a hodgepodge of zoning. I think the largest one, I mean, Mr. Zilgus's zoning, I think is manufacturing. The property to the west or to the east with Edison Estates would be...
Edison Estates Mobile Home Park, R-three.
Would be multiple... Would be a multiple-family zoning on the north side of the road. South side of the road's going to be mostly manufacturing, maybe a smattering of commercial here and there and some residential. maybe a smattering of commercial here and there and some residential.
Okay, and down the line, years past, you've come to us requesting zoning, the kind of conform zoning, are you looking at any changes out in there? I mean, maybe it's a crystal ball kind of question, but we don't know what the development will be out in that area because I know some is, as Mr. Zilgu's, you can point out, some's in the town, some's in the city. But this problem, what I guess, what I'm asking is, will this problem be like a thirty-year fix, no matter what development goes in out in that area? Or is this more of a five, six-year Band-Aid and we'll be back there? And I don't want to be going after these folks. I mean, you know what I'm saying? I mean, is this a, it sounds like it's a big, big project with a big, you know, interceptor. Is this going to be a twenty, thirty-year? I think you told me a hundred-year storm or something?
That was, that's the amount of water we have to pump out to build the current lift station. We have to pump out that much stormwater because there's such high groundwater in this area. The project is actually designed, the lift station is designed out, projected out with fifty years of growth in the area.
Okay, that's where I was getting at.
That's the current sizing. The street that we're building out there, it's an asphalt pavement street. Our code says minimum twelve years we're going to be building this. By the time we do the trenching and the backfill on this, it should be a very good, sound asphalt pavement. I would not anticipate being back in there for twelve to fifteen years, other than maybe some light maintenance, and then after that point in time, it will be similar to any other road. It will depend somewhat on use. If the area expands, heavy truck traffic, obviously, we may have to do some maintenance and mill and overlay type situation on that road to preserve its life and keep it going longer. If it's a lighter use area, that road will last for many, many years.
Okay, good. I know, I'm familiar with that area. There's a lot of cattails and things on the north side of the road. We're talking about putting a pipe down into there. What about trenching and ditches and are we going to have DNR issues? Are we going to have any other kind of issues that could stop the project or cause a problem or increase the project down the line? Do we know?
The storm sewer was a relatively new development based on the de-watering quantities that have come up within the last month. We haven't done a DNR permitting yet for that. Since it is a roadside ditch and it is a pipe installation, installation, we're not anticipating a significant number of problems at this point in time. That said, it is the DNR.
Right. Yes. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments? If not, I'll ask the clerk to take the roll call vote on Resolution fifteen dash four-seven.
Cummings?
Aye.
Pack?
Aye.
Excuse me, aye.
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carrier seven.
Okay, that takes us to citizen statements to the council. Again, this is an opportunity, when people have an opportunity to say something positive about the community or express a concern about the community. At this particular point in time, there are a few rules. Limit your comments to no more than five minutes. Give us your name and address when you come to the microphone. Speak directly to the council. You cannot speak about anything else that's on the formal agenda and there's to be no electioneering. Anybody like to come forward? I see no one coming forward. That takes us to the consent agenda items. The consent agenda items are made up of items that are viewed to be non-controversial in nature by the administration. As such, they're presented to us as a package. Either a citizen or a council member may remove any particular item from the consent agenda to be considered separately. The way I'm going to do this is read through these items. If you'd like to speak to one of these items, please come up the microphone, give us your name and address, and speak to a particular item as I read it. After that, we'll bring it back to the council for consideration and approval of the consent agenda. Okay, approval of bills presented by the finance director. Receipt and filing of common council minutes from January thirteenth and twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen. Receipt of claim filed with the city's insurance company, Quick Trip, seventeen twenty-five West Ninth Avenue, two fifteen West Twentieth Avenue, twenty-one fifteen Jackson, twenty-four hundred South Washburn Avenue for alleged excessive assessments. Walgreens, nine fifty South Keller Street, three fifteen West Murdoch Avenue for alleged excessive assessments. And then C here, UW Oshkosh for alleged damages to the biodigester from a city vehicle. Takes us to Resolution fifteen dash four-eight. Partial allowance of claim, refund of property taxes, partial rescission of property taxes, Walgreen Company for property located at nine fifty South Keller Street and three fifteen West Murdoch Avenue. Resolution fifteen dash four-nine, approval of initial resolution for special assessments, contract number fifteen dash oh-four, paving sidewalk driveway and utilities and first local street concrete paving program, east side area Parkway Avenue and Mount Vernon Street. Resolution fifteen dash five-oh, approval of initial resolution for special assessments, contract number fifteen dash five-oh, paving sidewalk driveway and utilities, second local street concrete paving program, north side area, New York Avenue and Custer Avenue. Resolution fifteen dash five-one, approval of two thousand and fifteen landfill tipping fees with waste management of Wisconsin for disposal of contaminated soil for various properties in the capital improvement program. Resolution fifteen dash five-two, approval of change order number one for Public Works contract number fourteen oh-eight with Donald Hepthus and Sons for various water main extensions. Resolution fifteen dash five-three, approval of agreement for engineering services with Brown and Caldwell for stormwater management planning in a northwest industrial park. Resolution fifteen dash five-four, approve appointments for boards and commissions to the following: Traffic Review Advisory Board, Grand Opera House Advisory Board, and Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board Committee. Resolution fifteen dash five-five, approve operator licenses and taxi cab driver licenses. See no one come forward at this point. Give you one more chance to come up if you want. Go on once, go on twice. Back to the council. Council members, questions on any of the items and any requests to remove any particular item from the consent agenda?
I'm not asking to remove something, but Mr. Roloff or Ms. Lawrenson, could you give us some color and background on fifteen dash forty-eight, the rescission of the property taxes?
We've had longstanding litigation with Walgreens Incorporated, and this resolution would take care of basically the five B above it. They filed a claim for excessive tax assessments for the two thousand and fourteen tax year. This resolution would partially allow that claim. It would bring forward the two thousand and ten assessment as established by the circuit court during the course of our litigation and refund that partial payment of taxes. Our plan is to hold their assessment steady for two thousand and fifteen, so, and then based on that, they've agreed they're not coming to board a review, will not next year have a claim for excessive assessment from them, so...
But Walgreens has not only pulled this stunt, so to speak, in Oshkosh, they've also done it throughout the state and other municipalities, correct?
Yes.
As well as other types of operations similar to Walgreens that have a common look to their facilities?
Correct.
Other items? Ms. Pansky, did you have something to bring up?
Resolution fifteen dash fifty-three, this is regarding the northwest industrial park?
Yes, northwest industrial park.
And the purpose of doing this was...
We have...
To prepare the land for...
We're preparing the land for possible land sale, and we have to take a look at not just the immediate area, but the area that goes beyond it, including a planned extension of Fernal from Vinland over to Jackson Street. So it's a lot more complicated than just one property, and that's why it's fifty-eight thousand plus dollars. This is really for pretty much that whole general area, isn't that correct, Dave?
Largely, it's the area for the expansion of the industrial park, though. It's not really related to Fernal. It's the area west of Vinland.
The property there, but it's not just the property we're selling, it's the entire property there in question.
It's the entire property, south of Fernal Avenue and west of Vinland, in essence, where we would be expanding the industrial park.
Do you know the approximate value of that parcel? First, you know, the sale price, what it would go for?
The, what's the acreage total there?
We have approximately eighty acres we bought a few years ago. I'm not sure if Mr. Birch would know the, he's shaking his head, no.
Oh, it goes for about twenty-eight thousand dollars an acre. So you can figure that it's an investment that we need to make in the infrastructure, and that infrastructure is going to be partially paid with the stormwater utility. When we actually do the utilities and whatever we need to do out there, that would be through a TIF, but this, because it's the planning for the stormwater, the stormwater utility pays for this.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions at this point in time? If not, I will ask the clerk to take the roll call vote of the council on the consent agenda.
Cummings?
Aye.
Pack?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carrier seven.
Okay, there were no items removed from the consent agenda, so it takes us to appending ordinance, ordinance fifteen dash fifty-six. I'll read it. If anybody would like to make comments on it, feel free to come to the microphone. Ordinance fifteen dash fifty-six, approval of changes in leased parking in the Recreation Department lot. See no one coming forward, bring it back to the council for a motion of second on ordinance fifteen dash fifty-six.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved and second. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to take the roll call vote on ordinance fifteen dash fifty-six.
Cummings?
Aye.
Pack?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carrier seven.
Okay, that takes us to new ordinances. These are, since they are ordinances, they have to be read at two consecutive meetings. The council will not be taking action on these ordinances tonight. As I read an ordinance, if you would like to speak to that particular ordinance at this particular point in time, please feel free to come to the microphone as I read it. I'll only bring it back for comments by the council. A council member tells me they'd like to make a comment on it tonight. They will be brought up again and be available for comment at the next council meeting once again. First one is ordinance fifteen dash fifty-seven, adopt ordinance to allow natural prairie prescribed burning and repeal chapter twenty-one pollution. Speak to that? Seeing no one? That will take us to ordinance fifteen dash fifty-eight. Slight change in the wording there. Ordinance fifteen dash fifty-eight, approve request from FVTC Foundation Inc. to attach property to the city from town of Nakai. FVTC voluntary attachment, forty-two thirty-three Wapon Road. Anybody like to come forward and speak to that? Seeing no one come forward. You going to speak to that?
Yes, I was just hanging up.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Dave Yurk. I work for Omni Associates and I represent Fox Valley Technical College and what, or the foundation. And what's going on there is because this property is being acquired, the state is requiring Fox Valley Tech to do a survey of this property, and the state is requiring a certified survey map to be done, which has to be approved by a municipality. And I know that the city of Oshkosh had extra territorial review of this property, so I contacted the city and they said, well, since this adjoining, the property is adjoining next to other city property with the agreement with town of Nakai, that it will be, that the property's going to end up being attached to, it'll be into the city. So that's why we're coming forward with this.
Okay?
That's kind of the background.
Okay. We appreciate it. Assuming nobody had any questions at this point? Again, on both of these, they'll be brought up again at the next time, and we'll see motions to possibly approve them at the next meeting. Anybody can make comments at the next meetings regarding either one of the two proposed ordinances. It takes us to council discussion, direction of the city manager, and future agenda items. First one is go EDC, an update from the city manager.
I don't have anything this evening, Mr. Mayor, unless you have any questions.
I took your questions. Seeing none, future agenda items. The first one is meeting with the Oshkosh Area School Board, February eleventh, which happens to be tomorrow night. The time has been changed from six to five. I think the meeting is to go from five to five-fifty because they have a meeting at six, so there will be a time, will be time constrained. Also, you should have gotten an outline in your materials last Friday, so you may want to bring those tomorrow night. If you're not able to be there tomorrow night for one reason or another, give an early start time to look at those materials because I think there's a pretty extensive outline of what's going to be presented tomorrow night, it looks like to me. It's anticipated this might be first of a number of meetings over time as we build a relationship with the school board. Okay, workshop tour of the Public Works Field Operations Facility located at six thirty-nine Whitsel Avenue, entrance from South Campbell Road to be determined. You have some possible dates out there?
The two I was thinking of, I'm leaning towards Tuesday, March tenth. I'd like to get you over there as soon as possible, I really would, but time clocks change on March eighth, so it'll actually be lighter if we wait until after March eighth. That's why I'm thinking March tenth. We could actually do it at the next meeting, we don't have any workshops scheduled, but I'd like to give council an opportunity to take a look at it, and if we did it about four-thirty, five o'clock, we could get you done easily by five-thirty. Just want to show you where we're at. We're essentially done on the inside with one minor exception. We're working on some punch list items, and we're just now getting started on the outside construction. I can't guarantee the weather, but I can guarantee the light if we do it on March tenth. So that would be my suggestion to council.
Any comments? And maybe people know some things about their schedules and that may play into a preferred date.
That sounds like a great...
March tenth for me right now.
No problems with March tenth, so if you would, put it on the schedule for March tenth. What time you want to get started?
I think we should plan on four-thirty, and if you show up late, no problem because you can come anytime and we'll be happy to take you around, and we'll get everybody done by five-thirty so you can get back here. Plenty of time for council.
Okay, we'll have reminder at the next council meeting on this, so...
We'll all just meet over there.
That would probably be best.
Okay, sex offender workshop feedback. Who's going to provide that?
Well, I...
Or do you want it from council? Or do you want any comments?
Just looking for any feedback from council members. You know, we had the presentation, we had a good deal of discussion. Certainly happy to, you know, entertain any direction from council on that. I think Chief Groyle and City Attorney Lawrenson gave you a pretty broad overview of what different options are out there, and we also overlaid that with things that we're already doing that would continue to be done with or without an ordinance. But the one thing we are working on is the zoning issue, which we think may address certainly one of the major symptoms, which is the concentration that could potentially happen at these locations, but we were happy to find out that the state has been listening and has been directing people away from congregating them. So I think speaking up had a lot of value, so your voices were heard, even though it didn't seem like that at first. The fact that there's only one person at that residence in question, I think, showed that they were at least understanding council's concerns.
That's by council members.
I thought it was a great workshop, that I, you know, I kind of deal more with this through neighbor work and then also, you know, being a Realtor, but, you know, I shared the presentation with a few people at our office, and I think it's helped them understand. They get comments, there's not much we can do legally about telling any buyer, but it tells them that there's a reason why they said he's doing what it's doing. And I think the article that was in the paper was a week or so ago by, it was Dan Rylandz. I think he really captured the essence of what the police department is doing and the reason why we're doing what we're doing. So I thought it was a very positive, positive workshop. I think we all learned a lot, or I did.
I agree. It just kind of solidified the confidence in the Oshkosh Police Department and what they're doing. I think, I think they do have the best policy for us and our residents in place right now.
Well, while I was unable to attend it, I'll give a shout out to OCMS. I did watch it several times online. I found it very, very well put together and beneficial.
Okay, Ms. Roloff, we thank you for putting that together. We see one chief back, we see the fire chief and not the police chief, so we pass on our appreciation to him, I thought he did a, just an outstanding job.
And the city attorney, they work hard.
I mentioned that next, the city attorney, so I think it kind of gave us some confidence that we're, that we're right where we are now, and we don't see a need for a change, and so I don't foresee proposals coming forth, if I'm correct.
You are correct.
Okay. Very good, so thank you. Before we do that, Mr. Cummings, you wanted to make your comment.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a comment about the production that Oshkosh North did of Shrek the past, this past week.
the past, this past week. I mean, it was a top-notch, beautiful presentation put on by these kids. It was, it was just great, and the choir director, Bridget Duffy, has done a great job with these kids, and I've been going to these last few years, and you can kind of recognize the kids as they progress, and their voices mature and their confidence matures, but just, it's, it was a great performance. I look forward to their next presentation, so, good job.
Okay, it takes us to the second point in time, when we have time for citizen statements to the council, so if someone would like to come forward and make a statement to the council, the microphone's open, please give us your, your name and address. Limit your comments, no more than five minutes. Speak directly to the council. Nothing on the agenda, may be taken up at this particular point in time, and no electioneering.
My name is Trisha Dean, I live at 1316 Broad. Come here this evening in regard to, we have some speeding again, and you know, I can't understand people. I don't know what everybody's big hurry's all about, but you know, the train gets called in because they blow the whistle and do all this stuff, but you know, people don't understand a train is bigger than a human being. How people just like to stand on the train tracks. Kids crossing, just blowing the horn on them. People are racing down our streets to beat the train to go around the gates. I said, what is wrong with people today? They're just, everybody's in a big hurry. They have to stop, and they realize the train is bigger, and we're getting back to sidewalks. We're trying to keep our area kind of cleaned up, but I heard from a couple of people that I know are disabled, they feel the same way. They want to talk about going for a walk. How can you go for a walk? People don't shovel two to three days. There's half an inch to an inch of ice. This is how we're going to express it, and a lot of people ain't going to understand it until they know that they're waiting for something to happen. You know, if you fall, you're liable. The people are, homeowners. Do they think that's more important, to be liable or get out and shovel? Hey, we don't like shoveling, my husband and I. We have to do it, we're handicapped, but we don't show like we're handicapped. People just got to get up a little morning, in the morning a little bit, don't wait two and three, four days. And I want to remind you the polar plunge is a week from this weekend. I hope everybody can come out. You can go have rallies, or you can do your little sign things, but it's going to be a good time to be there.
Thank you. Mr. Pottek, comment? This is the time when we do have sidewalks and places aren't getting done, and if people see that, they can call Public Works, what's the correct number to call again? We remind people that this is the season, it's going to, maybe snowing out there right now, as a matter of fact. Supposed to.
236-5065 is the Engineering Division of Public Works.
Call Engineering Division. If you see that, so if your friends are having a problem, they can call the number, the city will come out, and a couple of, a couple of, a couple of charges by the city, and behavior may change. Okay, city manager, announcements and statements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The executive director of the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, Jerry DeShane, he's been on board about nine months now, and the league board, just before I stepped down from the league board, adopted their strategic plan with Partnership for Prosperity, which is sort of the theme of their legislative program, and Mr. DeShane will like to make a presentation to council at the next meeting. It is not a workshop, it's really just him coming at the beginning. He asked for about 10 minutes of your time to just briefly talk about the legislative agenda, the priorities behind it, and really the theme is, Wisconsin cities and villages are really the foot soldiers in addressing economic development, and economic development can be improved through city services, and we need strong city services in order to promote economic development. So that's the theme that the league is trying to get out, and so Mr. DeShane will be taking his presentation on the road and would like to make a stop in Oshkosh. So he'll be coming at the next meeting.
It's my understanding that the league has asked for resolutions by various cities, and some of the cities have had resolutions, and you were thinking about putting that resolution on the agenda the next time also? See whether or not the council would entertain signing the resolution, is that correct?
That would be the intent. I believe we've provided you with a copy, but I can put another one in this week's newsletter.
Put a copy, it was in, like, the municipality or something like that, the magazine that people get, there was a copy of the resolution.
We'll get you another copy.
Fairly general resolution, doesn't, part of things, it says, cities need some help. State government to realize that.
Mr. Cummings, Ms. Allison Osby, and I were all at the League of Municipalities Conference when they presented the strategic plan, and the one takeaway that I, the thing I took away most was, is that cities and municipalities are no longer going to be on the menu, we are going to be setting the menu related to what's going on down in Madison.
Well said. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks. Okay, we need a motion to go into closed session. I'm going to ask the deputy mayor to provide the motion.
All right, motion to go into closed session. The council may convene into closed session pursuant to Section 19.891G to confer with legal counsel who will give legal advice concerning strategy to be adopted with respect to litigation in which the city is involved in pertaining to property located at 1,000 Pioneer Drive, the formal Pioneer Inn property, and to discuss bargaining option strategy in parameters related to the negotiation of an agreement with the Grand Opera House Foundation for lease and operation of the Grand Opera House pursuant to Section 19.851E of the Wisconsin State statutes where competitive bargaining reasons require a closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to go into closed session. Anybody like to comment on the council going into closed session? I see no one coming forward, so I'm going to ask clerk to take the roll call vote on the motion to go into closed session.
Cummings?
Aye.
Pack?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Q. 7.
Looking for a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second? Is there a second there?[1714.32]